Because of that bridge or associated with that bridge?
That's my recollection, yeah.
What had a void problem, all right?
Uh, well, yeah.
Remember, we remember void and we asked you to look into it?
Yep.
Void's caused by erosion, isn't it? So there have been-
But that's a, I, I think what Bill's talking about is subsequent damage because of the bridge, not damage to the bridge, so. Um, HEB's probably kind of enlightened us a lot more than we're-
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, but uh-
I'd be, I'd be averse to spending eighty grand.
I'm against a Band-Aid initially. I like your idea that if you're gonna do something, especially where there's an eighty percent return.
Yeah.
And if you-
And there's low return on the eighty-
And if we can get the state to step up from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty, and I think we've been on good working relationships with them.
Um, and then maybe some other things that happen in that-
And this current letter from the DOT on the bridge might provide us with an opportunity to have another conversation with the state bridge aid folks about, okay, so, you know-
We're now going towards failure.
Right, right. We have a more serious problem now and uh, okay, maybe get some indication about, about a lot of-
Moving up the spectrum.
So put the signage up and then move forward.
Is there another item or two that you wanna discuss that is a priority item with you?
I, not really, I guess. You did mention we had some more funds available for Lang Pond.
Yes.
There was a project that we started uh earlier this year that we had not completed. Uh, we had a rock that was sticking out into the road and blocking our drainage. We had that broken up. We removed part of it, but when we tried to take the last big chunk out, the big tree behind it was starting to wiggle back and forth. Um, so we feel, and that tree looks like it's dying. It, I don't think it helped it by blasting next to it.
The only problem is that's not part of the warrant article, is it?
Uh, it's on the road product. It's, it's on my, gone.
It's a mile rate to remove from the-
Yeah, it's up the road for the, it's a drainage issue, but-
Yeah, you have ten trees left in Lang Pond. Warrant article.
Do you have money in your budget to do that?
No. He doesn't.
He's not.
No, he doesn't. He's overspend-
Very quickly.
We've overspent a few lines to the two hundred fifteen thousand three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And we've got thirty thousand four hundred dollars in summer winter left. So in reality, we have fifteen grand, so then you have to take your, all your other stuff and add it together. And the most I can come up with Jim is forty-five thousand dollars. That's what you've got left. Outside of electricity and propane and all that normal maintenance shit, but-
What I-
A general budget, fall maintenance, stocks and bridges and something else.
What I did is I took all of his accounts and I revised them.
Uh, you have a lot more time than I can.
Right, and-
I've gotta go to short.
Yep, through August thirtieth, you've spent three hundred and six thousand dollars and you have a hundred and two thousand dollars in change left. What I did is, and I'll give you a copy of it, is it's a balance in each line. And you know, for example, summer, we have forty-nine thousand in, in winter maintenance because we-
Moved it around.
Okay, summer maintenance, you have eight thousand nine hundred left. Tree removal, you're already seven thousand nine hundred dollars over, but we had storms.
Yep.
Fall maintenance, you took five thousand dollars out, so you only have twenty thousand dollars left there.
Which fall and winter's fall so closely together.
Yeah, I don't think you-
Right.
That didn't actually make too big a difference.
I don't think you got any-
I, I think we need to go back to the question you raised on Lang Pond Road. Improvements to drainage on Lang Pond Road accrued to a benefit now in the area where we did the, the culvert replacement, the paving and all that last year. So, uh, I can certainly support the things that we're doing to improve drainage on Lang Pond Road as it relates to putting money into the, into what's left in that, in that line of it.
It all ends up down the pond anyway, so, at the lake, so everything goes down there.
So I, yeah, and I, I don't know how the other turnouts along the way are, if they, I know you've done a fair amount of work in the past on that.
Yeah, it's something we do every fall, so it's coming up when we do the grading usually.
Yeah.
The two issues I had that involved the warrant article is, do we do the speed signs? Have they been ordered?
I haven't, we haven't ordered those. We do have the narrow road ahead signs coming, or the one lane signs coming. Uh, we never came up with a speed limit on that. We, we talked about that, but I think we, we had, we had to- So we still need to order that, but-
But what is the speed limit, is, is the question, right?
Yeah. I think you said that we would have to go through, um, chief's worry on that.
Certainly would be good to have the chief's input.
Yes. The other thing is under the warrant article, does it make sense to have that apron paved and reconstructed so the water goes into the appropriate place? Did you get an estimate on that?
For the turnaround area?
Yes.
Uh, I haven't actually, uh-
This, this is my thought. Does it make sense to have them to remove the rocks? Salvage what gravel has been piled up over the years? To add additional gravel, so, and you were gonna talk to Dave Ford about, about the rain garden?
Yes.
Doesn't it make sense for the water that puddles there now to go into the rain garden? So the energy in the water and the brown water get cleaned, so only the rain garden does its job with only pure water goes into the environment?
I like what you're thinking. I'm almost wondering if it wouldn't have to have like another, another rain garden on the far side of it as opposed to trying to make it run uphill. But I like what you're saying, it's probably-
Is there a vendor that would do, do it for us?
I'm sure.
I'm thinking of Lakes Region Paving, for example.
Yep.
They, they've worked globally in the past.
Yep.
Cause if not, those encumbered funds disappear in another three months. Cause it's a warrant article and they're encumbered.
I'm sure we can get that done. That'll serve me. Of course you get it done.
It was recommended to me that you reduce speeds on it or one way. As you go this way, put it on the first bridge abutment, then it acts as a marker for the snowplow.
Yep.
And the same the other way, and then saves-
It's not a bad idea.
Here's, here's problem I see if you put a sign to mark the bridge abutment, is the sign sticking out where the piles gonna hit it?
It is.
Okay, so you want the sign, the, the speed sign back a little bit and just have a delineator up there marking the-
I'm just passing this on.
Sure.
And when you, I was also asked to pass, pass on when you, your guy with the grade or redoes the road both sides, it looks like just gravel, but that's, those are stone trenches.
Correct.
And if he makes a mistake and pushes the gravel into it, guess what? The sand goes down in and impacts the effect of the-
We're pulling material from the edges out and then kind of spread it back, but-
And it may be that you need to add a thousand dollars to your budget for Lang Pond Road because you're gonna need gravel to be brought in, so you put the crown up. But you also may need to add a couple truckloads of stone each year to-
Yep.
You know, that, that was kind of a unique engineering. And for every bit of dirt that goes in there, it just blocks the-
Yeah, I agree with that.
And it seems that the Purge Beach has survived well and has served its purpose. Although, although I've seen two people trying to launch boats on trailers there.
It's crazy.
So you're currently working on your next year's budget?
I am, yes. I'm still trying to get some numbers back as, as well from-
Okay, cause we're trying to put an October first deadline or somewhere around there on the initial budgets and we'll start nationalizing.
Do you know if the chief is ready to come in or not?
The other thing I wanna mention is FOIP project submissions.
I, I, we're supposed to receive today the painting quote for sure. That's one of the CIP projects that we had, I think, or maybe that, is it? I don't know if that's just building maintenance or not.
Depends upon-
The cost.
Yeah, where it goes.
And the grading. That's for all the buildings, right?
Yes. Yeah, I did ask for him to put in three different-
Itemize them.
Yep. And then, uh, I did talk to F R Carroll about the paving and stuff like that, but she said he would hopefully have a number for me for next.
For the, the yard?
Yep, but the one thing he did recommend, cause you've seen this in, you know, in the past, instead of doing the front of the garage area that is currently paved, maybe we should have a twenty foot apron out of cement so that you don't get the, you know-
Well, we talked about that when we were up there, yeah.
We had, but at the time, I didn't realize twenty feet. I was thinking like a four or five foot one. He recommended twenty feet. He said he sees it like in front of fire departments where you get the depressions and then you have the standing water that freezes constantly and-
That's what happened in that narrow lake, yeah.
Yep.
So, um, he recommends doing that.
Intensification. Yep.
And uh- So I will put together an estimate for that. That is something that actually we can do. I have a couple guys that work for me that do cement work on the side and they have all the tools for that and are very reasonable.
If we have a few moments before Andy shows up, what's the status of mowing, current bills and future?
Uh, right now, the bill, I'm still arguing a little bit, but uh, we're at four thousand fifty dollars for the until tomorrow. Thirty-sixty hours on it. They kind of showed me how they did the math.
Is there anything we can do to assist you?
Um, not at this point. I'll let you know if it looks like we can do something.
This is, I'll, I'll get back to capital projects in a minute. We talked about eventually needing to replace that small truck.
Yes.
Right? So, of course, CIP's a ten-year forward look. Uh, I'm guessing sometime in the next ten years that truck is gonna be done.
I love it too.
So, so we oughta, we oughta see, please put a project in for replacement of that truck.
I, uh, something that came up Wednesday and I put it in correspondence.
Okay.
And, um, I think we'd be pleased with it, so.
All right, so, but I, I don't know about this other thing. Put a project in. If we get the, if, if it becomes overcome by events, great, but get it in, then at least it's-
You can, you're absolutely right, but you might wanna read
Yeah, read that first.
The paperwork, cause the grant that's available only covers diesel trucks that have not yet appeared on CIP. Once you read what I, what I, what I came across, it'll make sense to you.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, mowing. The companies you've dealt with in the past years have done nothing but just create problems for you. One went out of business and never told you. The equipment breaks down and all that. Is there a, can we put this out to bid and see if there's a vendor that would do it?
Yeah.
I mean, you've just spent an important amount of time.
I have done that in the past, so it came out cheaper the way we've been doing it, and that's why we stuck with it.
But the point is, when was the last time all our roads were mowed?
They've all been mowed, just sometimes half one and half the next year.
The other thing is, all of these remaining things about buttonwood, road maintenance class, knotweed, could you just respond and put it in writing and see the same time?
Do I have that particular one right there, or I'm not sure that I've seen that one yet? Unless, I think I've had them all separately, but I mean- Um, I did talk to the NAB, it's a current company and we're talking, hopefully next week.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, chief, how are you?
Good.
Speed limit on Lang Pond Road, chief?
Yes.
It should be?
Twenty-five, fifteen?
Probably twenty-five, but if we did that, we'd have to do a engineering study on it. You have to do a study if you're gonna put it below thirty.
Oh, thirty, wow.
So-
Well, the engineering study doesn't have to, let me put it different. Yeah, it's a traffic study. It doesn't have to be engineered. We don't have to hire somebody to do it.
So, so how do we do a traffic study?
Um, well, we've done that in the past.
Put one of those things across the road, but we managed, we did that.
The town ordinance says twenty-five on all dirt roads.
It's not legal.
Who cares about that, right?
It's enforceable. State law says you have to, uh, if you're gonna post it below the statutory limits, you have to have a uh, traffic study done. What we did on Tough to Borrow Neck Road is we sat there and wrote down speeds of cars going by. If the trailer were working, we could do that, though I don't really have a, I don't really wanna leave it on Lang Pond Road where it would be no houses nearby. Um, but, I mean, that's, we could do something like that, spend it some time, and then you pick the eighty-fifth percentile of the cars and look at it and say that's typically where your speed should be. It's around that. That's typical-
We need to drive that way to this, yeah, every day.
I'll tell you why, M C, you can go slow back and forth.
Uh, there's a file on this because when the original Lang Pond Road committee got together, we actually did a survey.
Okay.
And you were part of that and-
So it, that, but, yeah, that's what you have to do if it's, if you're gonna go below the statutory limit of thirty and a, or thirty-five.
Cause we actually changed the speed limit and then upped it again.
Is this study very time consuming, take a long ti- a, 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 a long number of calendar days?
Probably not, no.
Okay, no.
I didn't spend that much time doing the Tough to Borrow Neck one.
Is it seasonally specific or does it matter?
It doesn't matter. It, the law just says you have to do a traffic study. It does not give you any kind of a, you know, you need to be, have your, your PE degree, you know, stamp or any of that stuff. It just is, you have to have a-
And you can use the county by the Lakes Region planning, correct?
Uh, I don't know if they get speeds with that. They just might get traffic counts for that.
They got seven different variables. They know how many-
If they can do that, that is doable.
Speed and bicycles.
That's a possibility, um.
And I think we got it for like fifty dollars because we're a member. The only thing is the state hires them to do the county and we need to give them some, um-
But we can, I mean-
I know there's a folder that's packed with-
We can. The, obviously, if you put a cruiser and do it though, you're kind of having outside influence on it, like we, that, but that's what we did with Tough to Borrow Neck Road. We sat a cruiser on the side of the road and just moved down some paths.
Because you're counting, they're seeing you.
Cause you see, that, that's the only, somebody, but it just says you have to have a traffic study to base it on. You do not have to-
So is that something you can do within, say, the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
And so then we would be in a position where we could identify a uh, speed limit and get it posted?
Yep. Lang Pond. That can be done in the next couple of weeks.
Yep, I'll do check with us.
The other thing I'll, I think, like, mentioned this before, was like stats on some of the part, part eight, part crimes and stuff, some of that, and so what we've had to do is last year they passed a law to require incident-based reporting, reports that you send to the state police, which then go to the FBI. It's kind of, um, I hadn't done it for a while because I got kind of frustrated when they took one that was like seven, eight years old or something and said, you gotta fix it, but even before I started here and I couldn't fix the report.
You also had computer issues, remember that?
Yeah, so I, I, but because they've changed the law, I'm in compliance with it. I've been doing it. That's why I spent a couple days this week working on, cause they needed it by a certain date and then there were errors that I couldn't clear and questions I had. Anyway, I got them in and then they sent me back. The state, the state gets it, then they review it, they ask for fixes, and the FBI gets it, and then they ask for fixes. Anyway, that's, that's the Nibers National Incentive Base Reporting System. Similar, it's, it's part of the Uniform Crime Reports, UCR statistics. I can also generate the UCR statistics, so I'll start, now that I know we're back on track again, I'll start doing that again.
Would you consider doing the following? Now, I'm not trying to micro manage.
Yeah.
Would it make sense every week for us to get a copy of the activity? And the reason I ask this is I go to other police departments, you know, in my juvenile work, and dispatch prints that up for them. And kind of like a, in the newspapers?
We, we can generate a lot.
List the activity, and my, my thinking is-
Yeah.
Is the following. The public is thirsty, in my opinion, for that information. I'm the one, I'm one of three guys in the room who know how busy and how active your guys are. But I don't think the public realizes that. I'm wondering if we could try it for a couple of months and if you were to come to us in December and say, you know, this has caused my secretary to spend two hours a week doing it. If you like the idea, hey, I'm gonna add it to my budget. I, I mean, what are your thoughts on that? Am I being articulate enough, number one?
Yeah, no, I, we used to do that. It, it, at one point I used to do that and release it every week, I think, to sort of be in the grant. There were some, it was good, mostly positive. There's a few negative comments, but mostly positive. It's not, it, it, we'll try it again. We'll, we'll work on it again. I'll get a call again.
The other thing is that it gets too expensive. I'm sure I could find someone who would donate some time, you know, would pass criminal background checks or whatnot. It, it's just, it's just a thought here, so. I know, I'll, I'll give you two examples, and Lloyd Wood is merely speaking for Lloyd Wood. Friends have told me that there was a situation on one of the islands involving a knife.
Well, yeah, it was reported as that, but it turned out it didn't involve a knife, but it was reported as involving a knife, so we had to go as- that was the situation that it was. It turned out to be much less, thankfully.
Another example is-
It doesn't matter whether it was actually what it was. You responded based on what was reported.
What was reported. That's how we responded.
In an appropriate way, and if, if it had been, then you were prepared to deal with it. Uh, and, and, so, you know, it doesn't, it's like a call out on an alarm, right?
Right.
You go out, regardless of whether it's a false alarm or something, you're, you're still responding and dealing with whatever the issue is. Uh, if it's a real world situation, uh, then you handle it. If, if it's a nuisance, then you're still, you're still there. You're, you, you went prepared to deal with the situation.
Uh, there's another situation I'm thinking of that's circulating in Melbourne, that there was an arrest by someone for a guy, I don't know if it was sexual predator or pornography or whatnot. And I'm thinking in the communication, is, and you're, I'll, I'll take a step back. You are excellent at crafting a public release that doesn't violate the people's rights, you know, doesn't violate the defendant's rights. And it takes time, I know that, but I'm just wondering if, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I know what you're saying.
And my motives are honorable.
Yeah, no, I-
You guys are busy and you're professional, but-
Yeah, no, I, I get what you're saying.
And, and this is just me talking. I'm not trying to speak for the board. You know, I think the statistics are, are important. I use them. And, no, for example, the July and August statistics, you know, things that you give us, I know they're coming.
I gave you July one thing.
Okay.
And August just ended Wednesday, so they're not, I'll talk to Vicki, but again, that's all.
I'm only speaking for myself. I use those and, and whatnot, but I do not speak for the board, so. Please give it some thought.
Crime is done.
Some dreas.
Um, yes.
With, with-
Can I bring up another thing? Job performance reviews, are they in the process?
They're done. I haven't reviewed them with the people yet, so they're done. They're on my desk. I haven't gone over them with everybody yet. So then, as soon as I, I, we put everybody's comments back and flip, I'll turn them in.
Great.
And budget, how are you doing on that?
Starting to work on that. I had, like I said, I had to get the Nibers done. I had to get it, uh, exculpatory evidence scheduled, information done. That was kind of time consuming for the AG's office. And then I had to, you know, policy in place on that, but I am starting on the budget process. I talked to Tom Albert yesterday, cause our server is, I found a way to, remember, it was like nineteen thousand to transfer our data. I found a cheaper way to address that, much cheaper, like a hundred dollars.
Oh, nice.
Quite a-
Can we do it this year?
Um, well, no, because I still need it, it, I'd say it's a hundred dollars. They will charge a hundred dollars to set it up on another computer, so I still need to do the other computer. If I get, Tom's supposed to get me a price to replace the server. I need my server replaced. And when he does that, then we'll transfer it over to, maybe keep it on the old server, as a matter of fact.
I mean, to me, a computer is like having a radio or a mess or a cruise or a, and, you know, you've put, may do as long as you can, so.
Yeah, the server's just not gonna be, it's a hundred dollars for the, the cost of the support to transfer it over. It's, I gotta buy some hardware.
Is that a one-time price or is that a month?
That's a one-time price. It's done. It's, instead of, yeah, it's a lot cheaper, so it's just a matter of, you know, Tom's been busy and when he's been here, I haven't been here, cause I had something else going on, so I haven't met up with him. Talked to him yesterday, cause I am having a server issue. He's gonna, supposed to call me today about what to work on. It's not doing proper backups for some reason, so it stopped.
Okay, I had a couple, a couple of other things. New cruiser ready to be put in service?
The eighteenth that goes down, we're waiting for parts, waiting for parts, waiting for parts. I've, I've been bugging them and they finally got the last stuff.
Who are you doing business with?
Two-way communication in Newington.
Is there anything the Sluckman can do to assist you?
Nope, it's just, it was a matter of them getting the-
We've listed the old cruiser.
Yep.
Has that, any bikes on that yet?
Um, I've had a call from the guy who bought the Impala and I, I should have had two calls asking about it. One person asked me the values. I can't tell you that, you know, but, uh-
Look it up. Yeah, right. KBB, yeah.
But the guy from, um, Chicago Motors, he's the guy, I think he got, I think he's the one who won the Impala last year. He, he called. I have to send him some pictures.
You mean the guy that bought the last Tahoe too?
I heard he was interested, but I don't, I don't know.
All right, I, I mean, yeah, I wanna say that he bought a couple of vehicles from us, right, yeah.
Wasn't interested in the sedans, but the SUVs he was interested in. I heard that anecdotally through his daughter to my daughter to me, so, so we'll see if, what happens.
So the performance report you figure you'll have by the end of the month, or?
I should have one within like a week.
Okay, so that's pretty stung.
Yeah.
And the budget is first of October a wonderful deal?
I'll get it done.
A new cruiser gonna be marked?
Yes.
You have those details?
Yep, I actually had them. They, they arrived like on Friday and the original date for the setup was Monday, so I left them in the box. But you're supposed to take them out and stretch them out, so, cause they just print them and they curl them and they ship them. And so I was waiting for that date, waiting for the date, so finally, like a week or two ago, I stretched them out in the basement so they're flat again. And I'm probably gonna talk to, in fact, I made one call to a- And I'm probably gonna talk to, in fact, I made one call to an auto body shop about putting them on.
Who does Adam use to do his decals and what?
I don't know, he was at one point using a guy.
Wasn't he over on Chickville Road?
There was a guy on Chickville Road he used, I'm not sure if some.
I'm not trying to micromanage.
No, I'll talk to him and get that name. We did get one name from somebody in Wakefield, and we did talk to Weston Auto, they've done it before. And we've actually had Two Way do it on the last cruiser, but it was up by somebody else's door this time.
Status of the radar trailer and all?
Yeah, the radar trailer, for some reason the batteries are dead and won't take a charge, and the new batteries, so I couldn't.
Sure, somewhere.
Yeah, there's something going on in there that wasn't just the batteries, I think, so I need to, when they come, I don't wanna, the company that fixes them is out of Maine, and they also certify our radars, so what I'll do is, I'll have them when they come up.
Combine.
Combine one trip to do both things. That's why I hasn't gone back out there. I can't get the batteries to take a charge, I've tried a charger on them, separate from the charger that's connected in the trailer, it won't take a charge from anything, so there's something happened to them. I mean, they're new batteries from this spring, so they're under warranty, but something, something else is going on there.
Parking ordinance?
They're working on that.
And there's still three different signs.
And I did contact.
You park your boats at eleven o'clock and then ten o'clock, and here's where you tied up all the loose engine, you're very good at that, making sure. Is your recommendation that we go to town meeting with a package? What are your thoughts?
I think if we're gonna change it, yes. I, personally, I kind of think it's worked. Yes, we have a couple weekends where it gets jammed up, but we, I think we try and work with the stickers and warn people and kind of badger people into compliance, if you will, rather than being hammers and handing out hundred dollar tickets. I mean, I know some towns have told me how many thousands of dollars they've made in there when I was inquiring about their ordinances. Oh, yeah, we make this many thousand, I'm like, hmm, that's not how I.
Would your advice be that this is not an issue to disturb the population?
A year, I think, I would, I guess I'm waiting for the state to decide what they're gonna do on the signage, too, down in Ninety Mile Bay.
Nice correspondence we had from them, there was confusion in the old ordinance about.
Yeah.
Where the no parking, so.
Everything's in that appointment.
Right, so, so it's basically, it's on us now, we have to.
And you sent a letter, and I gave the distance to you, didn't I?
We have things in there with, I can't.
I assume, from reading it, that they're talking about, our ordinance is what they're putting the signs up based on?
No.
No?
No, we, the selectmen say that, as I took it from them, they based it upon what the selectmen requested, they will look at it.
Yep.
If the selectmen request, if the town says, we don't want parking in this area because it's a problem.